Good evening, welcome to the February meeting of the Niskiuna zoning board of appeals. Cady, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Trymarki?
Here.
Ms. Gentile?
Mr. Gentile, are you present? Are you muted?
He talked to me a second ago.
I'm gonna mark him here. Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. Mr. Gentile, are you present? Just so we know that you're present, if you could let us know that before we move forward.
Yes, present, present, sorry, struggling with the technology today.
Okay, fair enough. We have, as everybody is aware, Mr. Gentile, one of our board members is appearing remotely. We do have a full board this evening, though. So before we get started with the matters, we do have to discuss the minutes from the January meeting. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Having heard no discussion on the minutes, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Antakowski has seconded the motion. Could we call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trymarki? Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Daly? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, the minutes have been approved. Ms. Cekety, will you call the first matter, please?
Appeal of Sajid Khan for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 979 Birchwood Lane, Niskiuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to combine pre-existing sheds into a single accessory structure, chicken coop and run, within the rear yard setback. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures are detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The sheds combined into a single shed measures 394 square feet and is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a rear setback minimum of 20 feet. As combined, the single shed is located 15 feet from the rear property line. Therefore, a five-foot rear yard setback variance is required. 10 notices were mailed. We received one response for the original denial in last month, and that's what Laura is gonna read. So, the variances are a little bit...
Oops. "To whom it may concern, I am the homeowner at 2961 Holly Hill Road, Niskiuna, New York. I am writing to express my approval for the appeal of Sajid Khan for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 979 Birchwood Lane, Niskiuna, New York, to combine existing sheds into a next single accessory structure, chicken coop and run on the property line within the side yard setback. The structure is presently located on the property line boundary against a wooded hill on the opposite side of the boundary. At its present property line location, it is reasonably well-hidden from view from Birchwood Lane, by trees and by the existing garage. It is also hidden from view from the adjacent neighbor by the wooded hillside. I believe that if it was moved 15 feet away from the property line, it would be much more visible from Birchwood Lane, which would actually make it a less desirable location. The Khan family are very nice people and very good neighbors, and the chicken coop will certainly help to provide food for their five children as well as a good learning experience for them. Therefore, I see no issues from my perspective on the proposed variance, so I would certainly approve it. Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion on the matter. Sincerely, Edmund Kasmir... Kasmirsik? 2961 Holly Hill Road, Niskiuna, New York, 12309."
Good evening, Mr. Khan. Laura, would you mind putting up the overhead Google image, please? Mr. Khan, I just wanna get the image of the property up, so everybody can take a look at it. Yes, please. Okay, so, Mr. Khan, looking at your property, directly at your property, the sheds in question are to the left-hand side of the property, if you're looking at it? Directly from Birchwood Lane, at your property?
Right at the spot where you're pointing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we can't see them, they're covered in trees here?
It's a hill.
Okay, there's hills, and it looks like there's some foliage as well? Yes or no, maybe there's not? You can't see the sheds in this image, correct?
If you stop right here, that's the first shed, right here. Can you go later up? Right here. That's the first shed, white, and then it goes the next one, then the chicken run. So it just, they just go up straight.
All right, let me just summarize, so I have an understanding. You don't have any photographs with you tonight, by any chance?
One email and images to her.
Okay, that might be helpful. Were there originally three sheds in the back?
Yes, it was three.
Are there still three sheds?
Still three shed and the chicken coop.
Okay, so there's four structures?
Yes, a coop attached to the existing shed as a run. So the shed is changed into a run.
Okay, so you've converted, so you haven't removed any of the sheds?
No.
And so we're dealing with one single structure now at the back?
They have a distance with each other, so they like...
There's a distance, and they're connected with...
Are they in a line, but they have one feet distance than they have?
And what, are they connected with chicken wire to allow the chickens to move through these various structures?
Two structures are not for chicken.
Okay.
So the last one is kind of abandoned, is falling down. So I fixed them in the summer, and then later on, I decided to change into a run.
All right, and the one that's falling down, is that closest to the back property line?
That's not close to the end property.
So I guess that begs the question, why couldn't we take that structure down, and then you wouldn't need...
I was planning to fix it, so I can use it as a storage for the lawnmower and stuff.
Okay. Have you renovated the other two buildings?
The other two I did, yes.
Okay. Have you taken any steps or thought about potentially moving the chicken coop, so you wouldn't need a variance?
They, oh, it'd be a lot of work to move them.
Okay. So right now, we're talking about the chickens are contained in red barn, run, and what's marked as coop on that diagram, correct?
Uh, no, the last one, run and coop.
The run and the coop, okay. And what is red barn used for?
I fix it just for a storage.
Okay. All right, why don't you describe how you fix the barns up?
I just painted it look like a barn, and then fixed the roof with the shingles, leftover shingles I have, and that's what I did.
Okay. And these are all... Do you think it would be possible to move any of these structures?
No, they are... Yeah, I think they are fixed structures. The middle might be, but that's, you probably need a crane or lift to pick it up.
Okay. And you indicated that there's a hill somewhere, so I'm not seeing the hill.
The back is a hill, all this is a hill.
There's a hill behind the structures that you can't...
As you can see, this hill is going up.
Okay, I see.
Then the house up there, you can't see it, because it's kind of go behind the hill.
All right. And the neighbor that indicated his approval of the project, where is his property related to your property?
They might be facing the Troy's Nickery Road, their back is towards me, towards my backyard.
Okay. They are not directly adjacent to the chicken coop, though?
No.
They're across the road?
They're facing Troy's Nickery Road.
Oh, okay. All right, understood. Does anybody on the board have additional questions?
How are you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
On your chicken coop?
Yes.
Are you gonna have footings on that, so the fox can't get underneath it and get into the chicken coop? Or are you just gonna put it on a platform?
It's pretty secure.
On where?
It's secure. I didn't see anything digging, anything, or raccoon.
Because in that vicinity, there's a lot of fox, red fox over there, that I know personally. And what I'm saying, I got a friend of mine that has a chicken coop, and he had to put footings down, so the foxes can't dig up underneath it and get into the chickens.
What I did was, the extra hardware wire went inside on the ground, and then I put all the, it's like pieces of, you know, leftover wood, all around it, and some bricks and rocks wherever the space is. So it's secure enough not to dig in or move something, some object out of the way.
Now, are you gonna have a rooster with those chickens?
No, you're not.
No, I didn't.
No, you're not.
No, I just didn't get, I'll tell maybe mentioning something regarding the constructions.
Laura, just for clarification, there are regulations related to chicken coops in the town of Niskiuna, correct?
Yes.
And the building inspector inspects for the compliance with those regulations?
Yes, yep. And I believe it's been reviewed for that, but you can't have roosters in our regulations. No roosters allowed in the town of Niskiuna.
Is there a limit on the number of chickens you can have?
Six.
Six chickens?
I think they came...
Yeah, they did, they've checked up about the, doesn't violate any chicken code.
How many chickens you gonna have?
Six, I would like more, but...
Six. My question?
Six, yes. And all of them should be laying eggs.
Can I ask a question as to why, what the basis for the variance is? So, am I correct to say that these structures existed before you started making these modifications to them?
I think probably more than 50 years, she mentioned.
More than 50 years they've been there? So the only reason a variance is now is because there's modifications being made to them, and they're being combined into a single structure?
The combination.
I just fixed them, they were falling apart, so I fixed them, that's all I did.
Okay, but there's no new buildings being built, there's no new encroachment on the lot line or anything like that?
Yeah, and just continuing on with that thought, is there any reason that all of the structures need to be combined? I know that the chicken coop has to be connected with the chicken run, but what about the other two structures? Why do they need to be combined? And would that make a difference with respect to the variance?
They existed like that, just like that, so...
Oh, they existed like this, okay. So the only reason we need this is because of the improvements to the structures, correct?
Yeah, the...
It's not necessarily a combination?
I think they may have been added individually, but like 50 years ago, and if you take them individually, some of them are smaller than 120 square feet and may be allowed to be closer, but they have a continuous roof line. So when the building inspector was reviewing them, he decided to combine them all into a single structure because of the continuous roof.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other further questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. What other structure you have on the property, beside those?
None of them, except on the left side of the property is a well, existing well, when I bought it. So it was covered with a small structure, that's the only thing.
So combining those?
Yep.
And you're gonna have two structure, total?
Those are three structure, and I have one, you see tiny white one?
You're combining those three to one, that's what you're asking right now?
Okay.
Your application. So you will have two if this was to be approved to become one structure. So you have four right now, and you're trying to combine three to one, right?
I'm not combining anything, I'm just have a run and a coop, that's all I have.
I understand. So, Laura, the question is, originally, if it was 120 square feet, 120 square feet, they only need five feet setback, right, Laura?
Yes, if it's under 120 square feet, yeah.
So it seems to me that this was built 15 feet away, even though they could have built it at five feet away, originally.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's in the packet, but I did look up when the assessor noted these structures, and it is a long time ago.
By looking at what you guys provided, it looks like it's 15 feet away right now, even though it's not combined, which the way it is, could have been five feet away.
So, the building inspector felt, when he did a site inspection, that because there's a continuous roof line, that he would consider it to be a single structure over 120 square feet?
Okay.
And then subject to the major accessory structure rules. It may have been put together like that, or over time, the roofs may have kind of merged, but by the time he went out there, he didn't feel that it would be appropriate to call any of them like less than 120 square feet anymore.
Okay, so it is 394 feet right now?
Combined, as a single structure, yeah.
Okay, all right. One more question, are you planning on doing anything else on that property before, after you finish this?
Maybe next summer, I might fix the falling down whites shed?
The same shed?
No, the white shed, which is...
Okay, so that's gonna be part of that one structure. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any other further questions?
I do.
Mr. Green?
Good evening.
Good.
The photograph that we're looking at is helpful, but for the record, I'd like to inquire, is this structure at the bottom of a small slope or hill?
It's at the flat area.
It's at the...
The backside is a hill, it goes up.
It's on the backside of the hill. And at the top side of the backside of the hill, is there a neighbor up there?
All the way up there, which you can see, because the hill goes up, and then his house comes up. So if you're going on the road, you have, the road goes up, and then you see his house.
All right. And... I'm good, thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Having heard no more questions from the board, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no member of the community that wishes to be heard, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible, I think Mr. Khan here is trying to fix all these structures together. And according to our inspector, it seems to be they were all connected together. So there's no other way to make this happen, except the way the applicant is trying to do it. Does it cause any undesirable change to the neighborhood? I think Mr. Khan's also taking care of and fixing those structures, that they've been there over 50 years and needs some remodeling, and he's willing to remodel it. Whether request is substantial, it's only asking for five feet, and because it's combined to one, so it's requiring the five feet compared to the 20 feet. So it's not that substantial. Whether request has adverse physical or environmental effect, I think it's way far on the property, it's not gonna have any effect to any environment. Is alleged difficulty self-created? I think the applicant is, it's self-created, but again, is trying to combine it to one, and it seems to me that it's doable that way, with the existing structure on the property.
A motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion for everything that was stated.
A motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Cekety, will you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trymarki?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Okay, here we go. I'm gonna say yes, and here's why in this one instance. First of all, from the information that you've provided, including the package and photographs, we have a chicken coop that's basically buried far into the interior of the property. Two, it's buttressed against a large slope or hill. So there are no neighbors who would apparently be immediately affected by the structure and/or the chickens. I'm also cognizant of the fact that there was one neighbor who, in fact, placed a letter in the record for us on your behalf, indicating that they were okay with this. So for the reasons stated and the additional reasons I've provided in this one particular instance, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Congratulations, your variance has been approved seven to nothing.
Do I have to apply?
Yeah, come to our department tomorrow.
Thank you for coming out, take care. Ms. Cekety, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Nicholas Daniels, agent for a variance from Section 220-15B 3 and Section 220-13 Schedule IA of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskiuna as it applies to the property at 40 William Street, Niskiuna, New York, located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District, to construct a new single-family dwelling, which exceeds the maximum coverage of the lot and is partially within the front and side yard setbacks. Section 220-15B 3B, or 3, 15B 3 states that no structure shall be constructed on a non-conforming lot unless it shall have a front and rear yard conforming to the minimums required for the district in which it is located. As proposed, the new single-family dwelling does not have a front yard which conforms with the minimums required for the district. Therefore, a variance from this section is required. Section 220-13 Schedule IA establishes a maximum lot coverage by building and structures of 10%, a front yard setback minimum of 55 feet, and a side yard minimum of 35 feet. As proposed, lot coverage by building and structures is 13%. The house will be 27.1 feet from the front property line, 18.3 feet from the right side property line, and 25 feet from the left side property line. Therefore, a 3% lot coverage variance is required. A 27.9-foot front yard setback variance is required, and both a 16.7-foot side yard setback variance and a 10-foot side yard setback variance is required. 11 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Is the applicant present this evening? Oh.
So I'm on the, I'm virtual.
Mr. Daniels, how are you, sir?
Good, how's everyone?
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, Nicholas Daniels, Hersberg and Hersberg, 18 Locust Street, Albany, New York. Just a quick background on this...
Mr. Daniels, before you get started, let me just, I'm gonna actually defer to the town attorney. The town attorney's raised some issues with respect to the septic system on the property, and before we start considering these variances, I know that he had some questions that he wanted to direct towards you to help us understand to the extent of the feasibility of constructing a home on this lot, before we got into the variances. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hess to ask some questions.
Of course.
So, Mr. Daniels, we'd like to hear what you have to say to support this application, but we'd like you to pay particular attention to the septic for this lot. So for instance, one of the concerns that I have is that if a variance is granted, and we go through the effort and spend the time here to do that, whether or not it's likely that the Department of Health or the DEC is going to give you, whether your septic, proposed septic system is gonna work. So in your map, you'd indicated that it was pending, your design of the septic system was pending your perk tests. But so, when you speak about this, please address how this application would be different if you don't get sufficient perk, and you need to put in a raised system.
Of course.
And before you start discussing that, could, Mr. Hess, could you just...
Well, the concern that I have is, you're asking this board to spend its time to consider an application that frankly may be moot if you can't put in the septic system that you want. I mean, the whole idea of having, you know, why this is an RR zone is because, and has bigger lots, is to make and take into account the fact that you need to have septic systems on the lot, because it's not a municipal sewer. So if it's not likely to get approvals from the Department of Health, then I'm not really sure why you're asking this board to spend time on it first.
So, Mr. Daniels, why don't you answer that question, you know, at the outset? And if you could just briefly define the differences between the different septic options for the parcel in, so for the benefit of the board here?
Yep, now, much like the other lots that are surrounding this one, there's no public sewer, as you mentioned. So I am certain that a lot of these are on, have their own septic systems. So the availability for perk, we would feel confident in. We unfortunately couldn't get in there in time to get some tests before frost. So, you know, if you feel more comfortable waiting until that happens, we can certainly look into it. But, you know, we feel fairly confident that we can get some sort of system in there that would, you know, be able to serve this future home.
Well, I guess the question then becomes, does it make sense to table the matter until you have sufficient information and move the matter forward? And what is the timeframe for that?
Now, I believe, so a lot of this entire parcel is wooded, so there'd have to be some tree clearing involved. I don't know the availability of, you know, someone who can get in there and clear the lot. And I don't work often in Schenectady County, so I don't know, does the county have a timeframe where they stop doing tests in the winter?
Well, that's outside of my purview.
Right.
They have a timeframe that they don't want drain fields installed because of the settling. They'll let you do emergency repairs, but during the winter, they don't like to actually see re installations. But I just, can I, I can just tell you, not only do I live in this neighborhood, but I also see applications from this fairly regularly, that it's unlikely that a subsurface septic would be allowed. Almost all of the homes in this neighborhood have to have a raised mound because of the groundwater levels.
So, Mr. Daniels, did you contemplate that with...
Yeah, I hear that. I mean, we have a lot of ample space in the backyard to do so. If that is the case, I feel like, you know, given where the house is, we have ample room to, you know, put some sort of system like that in there. That's, I think, the best approach we can, you know, look at for now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Daniels, I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. You want this board to move forward with the variance request, even though we don't know where the septic field will be located? Or that you want to table the matter until you can do perk tests?
Yeah, I believe we should probably table this until further testing is done. If that would give a more favorable approach toward the board, then I think that's probably the best case of action.
Well, I don't want to give you the impression that the board has raised, you know, any kind of opinion. Obviously, I'm only speaking for one board member, the seven-member board. But from my perspective, I can tell you that, as you're aware, the application requires us to contemplate the environmental impact of the variances that are sought. And without the information that we're discussing here tonight, I think that we'd be hard-pressed to do that. So read into that whatever you want to read into that. But it's up to you as to, we're giving you the option to table it or to move forward tonight with that understanding.
Yeah, but, I mean, I think it could be discussed, whether, assuming that a septic system, given that its current location is feasible, what's the board's reaction toward the initial location? Is, it's an undersized lot, and given the building footprint, or...
Well, I mean, to the extent that you're looking for an advisory opinion tonight, you know, we're not in a position to do that. know, we're not in a position to do that.
Okay, understood. So yeah, until I get further data, I think then tabling it is the best course.
Okay, and then procedurally, we'd have to make a motion to table?
Correct, and then it would get re-noticed in the future when the applicant was ready to go.
Okay, so based upon my communications with the applicant, the information that the applicant has offered and the applicant's desire to table the matter, I would move to table the matter until such time as we have sufficient information to move forward with the application. So a motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Seketti, will you call the roll?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hulk?
Yes, so, Mr. Daniels, thank you for coming this evening. The matter's been tabled, pending additional information being submitted. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Yep, understood, we'll get back to everyone soon.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Ms. Seketti, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Anessa Sarkosova and Yuri Raskin for a variance from Section 220-18B2 and Section 220-18B3C of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 15 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, located in the R3 High Density Residential Zoning District to install a 7-foot-by-7-foot shed which exceeds the number of allowable accessory structures on the lot and partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than three accessory structures on a lot. Currently, the property has a fence, swimming pool, and pavilion. As proposed, the shed would be the fourth accessory structure, therefore a variance for one additional accessory structure is required. Section 220-18B3C states that minor accessory structures, which are defined as structures 120 square feet in area or less, are permitted closer than, are not permitted closer than five feet to the side and rear lot lines. As proposed, the shed is located one foot from the side lot line. A four-foot side yard setback variance is required. Eight notices were mailed, one response.
To whom it may concern, I, Arthur Reynolds, and Anna Reynolds, currently residing at 19 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, 12309, do not object if our neighbor Yuri Raskin, living at 15 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, 12309, installs a 7-by-7 shed which exceeds the number of accessory structures on a lot and is impartially within the side yard setback.
Thank you. Will the applicants please state their name and address for the record, please?
Anessa Sarkosova, 15 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Yuri Raskin, 15 Bergen Place, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
So I think, I think you're back. This is, you're back, right?
We're still waiting for you to come for the pool.
Right, I didn't get the invitation. It must have gotten lost in the mail. So why do you, the last time you were looking for a variance for what?
To install pavilion closer to sideline.
Okay, and that was granted?
Yes, you kindly approved that. Now we need to put a shed to store all pool equipment, snow blower and more.
I guess that wasn't contemplated at the time of your original application?
Well, we did not know, but apparently we have all this equipment all around the house and garage and basement, so we want to keep it in one place. And actually, it will fit perfectly in this corner and will be inside of our fence property, so it won't be visible for neighborhood for neighbors. So it will be inside of, behind the fence.
What kind of fence are you installing?
We have a fence already.
What kind of fence is it?
Vinyl.
Vinyl, so the shed is going to be below the height of the vinyl fence or it's going to be?
It will be on the roof, only roof is visible. That's not a big shed, it's 7-by-7.
Okay, and the fence encapsulates the property, so that's counted as an accessory structure. You would be entitled to have a fence around the pool, and that would not be counted as an accessory structure, correct, Laura? Okay. And the neighbor that indicated that they approved the shed, are they directly next to you, or are they two houses away?
One house away, so we're 15, they're 19.
So they're 17, so 17 Bergen?
I don't know, something sent mail to 17, but they received mail from you, from Town Hall, so.
All right, and have you spoken with your neighbor at 17 Bergen Place?
Yeah, they did, they did not.
So yes, you spoke to them about putting the shed where it's located?
We did not, but we spoke with 13.
Okay. So you don't know what 17's position is one way or the other, correct?
Well, they did not mention anything against that, so we assumed they're not against. I think they would if they had something against us.
All right, I'm going to ask if, okay, is there anything else you want to offer as to this application that we haven't discussed?
We could not put it on both sides of the house outside of fence because on the right side of the house, it's AC system, on left side is a pool pump, so it's not enough.
You cannot put it outside.
Yes, not.
Okay, and?
But outside of.
And I believe that there is a gate?
Gate on both sides, yes.
So you couldn't move it over one foot, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
And why couldn't you move it one foot over?
Because it's a gate, it's only eight feet from a corner to gate.
So it'd interfere with the gate, correct? All right.
And gate opens outside, so it would not hit the shed inside.
Does anyone have any other questions?
If I may, Mr.?
Mr. Green, sure, go ahead.
Good evening, how are you again? The, what's the roof of the shed, if the application's granted, what's it going to be made of? What color is it? How much of the roof of the shed would be visible from a person if they were standing on Bergen roadway?
It's nine, nine feet tall and.
So how high is the, just help me, just help me out here. All right, so how high is your fence? The white fence perimeter, how tall is it?
Six feet.
Okay, so above that six feet, how much of the shed and/or the roof of the shed would be visible from the roadway?
Two or three feet. Two or three feet.
Very good, thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. You mentioned that you didn't want to put it on the outside of your fence. Do you own that property, or is it your neighbor's property? Because?
No, that's our property. I meant the outside of house, on house side, outside of fence.
So where the fence is, that's where your property is, right?
Backyard.
Okay, and you put in that shed is one foot away from the fence?
Yes.
And you said you can't move it because of the gate?
Mm-hmm, gate and a pool.
If I make it five feet away from the fence, the?
It will close the gate.
It's going to be covered partially.
Okay, so how far is it right now from the gate?
We don't have it yet. It's not installed.
It's not installed, but if you were to install it, how far would it be from the gate?
One foot.
One foot?
One foot.
So you have?
Wait a minute, from the gate?
Yeah, one foot because?
Not from the fence, from the gate?
One foot, because this section of the fence is eight feet and shed is seven feet.
Can you move that gate a little bit down so you can move the shed five feet away from the fence?
But gate is installed already, all sections of fence installed.
Did you look into, to try to have five feet away from the side? Did you try to figure a way to do that?
We put a fence as soon as we install the pool, so, and shed came later to mind, so it's installed sections of fence with installed gate.
So the fence is up already?
Oh, yes, yes, since we had a pool, yes, we have a fence.
Yeah, as a matter of fact.
Thanks, the applicant has delivered some photographs to the board, and I'd request we make these photographs a part of the record.
Can't really see gate on it, but.
So where is the gate compared to those pictures you passed?
Uh, where you see that?
I think it's in that photograph, right?
That's where the shed is.
So the applicant has provided us with a picture that has a wheelbarrow in it, and the applicant's indicated that where the wheelbarrow is, is where the shed will be located.
All right, and again, the gate, where is it compared to the wheelbarrow? Is it there already? Is the gate there?
Gate is already there.
Oh, yeah, gate is a part of the fence.
Okay, this is where the gate is right now?
Yes, this part is eight feet, and shed is seven feet. So it'll be this corner of the fence.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Let me see.
It's a camera.
That's okay.
I think we, I think we have an understanding, Mr. Latif. Yeah.
I think we got, we got, the gate is eight feet away from the fence.
From the corner, yes.
One section. So, and the next section, basically, the gate is in the middle.
Gate and then, yes, more section.
And the reason you can't move that shed over because?
It'll block the gate.
It'll block the gate, okay. And let me ask you this, the gate, what kind of access you going to have from that gate? Is like, are you going to have a lawnmower going in there or a?
Lawnmower and a snow blower.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And it's wide enough to move it with?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Latif. Is there anybody else that has any questions?
The gate, is that going to swing in or swing out? Okay, that's what I want to know, thank you.
Mr. Green?
Never to preclude you from making any application in the future that you feel that you might be entitled to make, but I'm just wondering, I mean, as you stand here today, do you have any thought in your mind of having to come back for any other further requests of this board? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
We should have thought when we first came in, but.
Heinz, it's always 20-20. Any other further questions?
Yeah, I do, so you have two gates leading to the front yard of the house. As you're facing the house from the street, which side of the house is the garage on? On the right side. If you were to not use the gate on the left side of the house, you said, on the image, the overhead image or the hand sketch that's being shown on the overhead right now, there's 18 feet up from the left side of the house to the left property line? So if you were to put the shed on that side of the house and keep it five feet away from the lot line, you would still have, oh God, now I have to do math, but about 12 feet in which to put the shed?
But it's also the gate and the pavilion over there, so it will be very close to pavilion. Because I was doing the drawing.
So can you explain why there's not room on that side to put the shed over there?
Because there's a sidewalk on the right. So in order for me to get the snow blower, I have to walk to the snout to get the snow blower and bring it, like, you know, it's not very convenient. And I do have a path, like a small path on the right.
Okay, so you want it on that side because it's closer to the driveway?
And the reason we have a gate there because there's a pump there, so it serves the pool.
Okay. How big is the house altogether, square footage?
Thirty-two hundred, almost thirty-two hundred.
And one or two-car garage?
Two.
And there's not room for the snow blower in the garage?
There is, but?
Two cars, but he has a van. And pool equipment, too.
Okay, anything further? Were you all set?
None for me.
Okay, anybody else have any other further questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no one, is there anyone on the board who would like to make a motion for or against this application? And let me just clarify that there are two variances that are being requested, so if you're making a motion, please clarify whether you're making a motion with respect to one Having heard, Mr. Green, I don't want to jump in here. Having heard no one, I will take the privilege of making a motion to approve both variances. I don't believe the benefit of having the shed for the purposes outlined by the applicant can be feasibly achieved by other means. We frequently have had variance applications seeking an additional accessory structure for the purposes of putting a shed on the property for these items to store relative to the pool and a snow blower. It's a very common application, and although it might theoretically be possible to put it in different locations on the property, the applicant has indicated that that would conflict with other accessory structures already on the property. The one-foot side yard variance is, in my opinion, de minimis, not substantial. I don't believe that this will have an undesirable change in the neighborhood because of the existence of the vinyl fence shielding large segments of the shed from the road and from neighbors. There's been no indication that any of the neighbors have had any issues with respect to this variance or any previous variance at the property. I would also note that with respect to the variance for the additional accessory structure, it wouldn't be necessary if the applicant had placed the fence around the pool, which would then have not made the fence count as an accessory structure. I do believe, I don't believe there's going to be any adverse physical or environmental effects, and although this, like most applications, are self-created to a certain extent, I don't believe that's dispositive of this application. So for those reasons, I move to approve both variances. A motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard none, Ms. Seketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to put this on the record that the one-foot is big for the board, especially for a small shed. Thank you.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hulk?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Congratulations, your variance has been, your variances have been approved seven to zero. All right.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Take care, thank you. Ms. Seketti, will you call the last matter, please?
Appeal by Scott Com for a variance from Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1381 Myron Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District to construct an addition on the property partially within the side yard setback. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. The existing house is 25 feet from the side property line. As proposed, the addition will be nine feet from the As proposed, the addition will be nine feet from the side property line, therefore a six-foot side yard setback variance is required. Ten notices were mailed, zero responses.
Good evening.
Hi, sir, will you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Scott Comm, 1381 Myron Street, Niskuna.
I see your application, why don't you discuss to the board, tell us a little bit about your project and what steps, if any, you've taken to try to mitigate the need for variance?
Sure, and I think I put some reasons in there, a little narrative going in with my application, but our house is small, oddly laid out, it's 100 years old, with too many windows, too many door openings, very small rooms, very few closets, and it worked, it worked for us for the third, prior to 32 years, because I had two children, and we made it all work. But now my oldest daughter is married and having a baby in June, thank you, very excited to be a grandfather. We've had an empty nest for years and haven't known what to do with myself with a daughter so long. My other daughter is getting married in June, May rather, and she is very eager to start a family. So, as we have discovered, even with our present six-member family, we don't eat together comfortably anywhere because of the layout of our house. Our bedrooms are small, we only, I consider it two and a half bedrooms because one bedroom is bisected almost by the attic stairwell, oh, pardon, sorry. So, so when grandchildren come to visit and stay over with Grandma and Grandpa, or Gigi and Fabi, as we're gonna be called, we'd like to have a little more room. My wife has always wanted a nice, big eating kitchen, and she's always been desirous of a study, family room type of thing, as well as a decent-sized bathroom where we, now four people or six people, however many, will be able to simultaneously use. We made it through life so far with one bathroom, but that was always a challenge. So we're looking to add a kitchen in the study downstairs, and we're looking to add a master bedroom with a bathroom upstairs.
Okay, and obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, I assume that you need the setback to accommodate the additional square footage for the property?
Correct.
And have you discussed the addition with the neighbor that would be most closely affected by that addition?
That would be my daughter.
Oh, okay.
And I don't, I hear that she hasn't objected, so that's probably a good sign for both of us.
Will you, will you be able to eat all together with this addition?
We will indeed, as many as we need. And I also wanted to point out one other, one other thing about the eating thing, my, my wife's parents are recently deceased, and they have had a, they had a custom-made kitchen table because there was a lot of children in their house, and so we have, we have that table in storage, waiting for adequate space to put that, so we can bring that family heirloom, so to speak, you know, back to use. So yes, we'll be able to feed everybody, and some neighbors too, probably.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, Mr. Comm, you've answered all of my questions, I'm gonna ask if anybody else on the board has any questions?
Yes, Chairman, this is Joey, apologies for the voice. Did I correctly hear that a family member of yours owns 1389 Myron?
Uh, well, actually, I am the owner of record of 1389, my, my daughter lives there, and she and her fiance, soon to be husband, will be purchasing the house from me when they have their union, so to speak.
Understood, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else that has any other further questions?
Just for Richard, just to recap, you live in Old Niskuna, Myron Street, you have a house that was built probably.
Nineteen thirty.
Thank you, and it's located in a, a non-traditional type of location.
Well.
A little bit, if you were to just help, let me finish. It's more to the left, you got a lot more room to the right.
That is correct, I currently have, I think, twelve, uh, well, the driveway is actually about three feet away from the house, and my neighbor, whose house is a mirror image of mine, we share a driveway.
Yep.
And a garage, oddly enough.
Yep, for the record, I did a site inspection.
Oh, did you?
Right, actually, I do it every day, I walk down Myron Street.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, so I, when this, when this came up, I was like, oh, I even know the house. But I did make a separate site inspection, and is the addition that you are contemplating and requesting from this board two stories?
Yes, it is.
Well, the fact that you're requesting two stories and if it's granted in any way impede the line of sight or visuals of the house to the right, notwithstanding it's technically owned by you or gonna be occupied by a family member?
No, not, it's, it's far enough away, the other house, the house next door, I wanna say is maybe 30 feet from the property line?
Yep, yep.
And the sun won't block it, because my roof will not extend above what's currently there.
Yep.
It's gonna blend in hip into the, into the other one.
Yep, and for the record, if I may, if you could just talk to me and the board just for a little bit about how the addition will match the present structure?
Well, because I'm a lunatic, I will remove my shingle siding from decide where it's going, and use that as far as I can go, and then spend a ridiculous amount of money for more cedar shingle sided that I will paint to match the rest of the house, because.
Yep, for the record, ready, I know you meant that lightheartedly, but I don't think you're a lunatic at all, and that's exactly what I was getting at. In other words, we're not going to have something that looks like it was, doesn't match, I'll put it in English.
I want this to look like it was all done at once.
Excellent, thank you, I have no further questions, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do I not see you walk in the street, we walk every day, I don't know how I missed you.
Literally every day, I bet you we've said hello.
I'm sure we have.
In the wintertime, everyone's bundled up, you have no idea whether it's a buffalo or a human being.
It was too cold for me today, it's too windy, I'm gonna keep, I'll keep an eye out for you though.
Great, very good, sir.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In terms of drainage and the impact of the properties that are behind you?
Yep.
Have you done any analysis or engineering, understanding what the impact of that water's gonna be and will have any impact on the.
Sure, the way that the, the drainage in our, I'll call it, one, two, three, four houses, 81 and 89 Myron, and then the houses that are on Dean Street behind us, on, on my property, next door, there's a, I call it a drainage swale of sorts that runs down to behind the garages, and it goes to the right to a, I'm gonna call it a, I'll call it a catch basin for want of a different description of it, because it's not official city. So that's where the water runs across my backyard and from.
Towards Almyria or towards the neighborhood?
Yes, and it's in the corner of the corner house on Dean and Almyria.
Tom and Emily?
Yeah, okay, Tom and Emily, yes, and, and the other corner is, is my house on 1389.
Right.
So there's a.
Right between the two houses that back up to each other on Dean and Myron?
And that's where all of the, yeah, I'm, I'm currently experiencing excess water from, because my yard is suck over the years, so I have to get some more fill in there to kind of just bring that up a little bit, but yeah, all the water kind of goes to Tom and Emily's house in the back.
Okay, and we think this is going to increase the amount of water that goes to their house? Because if it does, I'll be in big trouble.
Nah, probably not, because very few of it, very little of it comes from my yard, per se, it mostly comes from the swale, which is on the outside of where the setback is, it's right on the property line, in fact, is where that, the drainage path goes.
The swale run, yeah, if you could go to the, to the image and point the direction in which it goes.
Sir, sir, can you just grab the microphone just so we can get it for the record, please?
Karaoke maybe. Yes, the so-called, I'll call it a swale, but the, the way the drainage works here, it runs right down the property line here, sorry, yes, down the property line here, and then water comes from here, from the backyards this way, from some of the yards this way, and all runs down to here, where that, I don't wanna call it a system, but the catch basin, where that catch basin is.
Okay, so the, where the addition is going, the, the water will run to the back of the lot and then.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be going this way.
Yeah, right.
Because I'll shape this this way, and then it'll, and the, and the lot is somewhat sloped from front to back.
Okay.
So, but naturally, it runs to the back, because the foundation is maybe 18 inches to the front and almost three feet in the back, so the.
Okay.
The yard gradually slopes towards the back.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just got, I've got one question, if you don't mind.
Sure, not at all.
Well, I'll let you get back to the, the mic there. I commend you for designing within tight parameters. Did you, did you explore alternative designs that would alleviate the need for variance?
Unfortunately, yes, quite a bit, in fact, but mostly I tried to, to get within the setback requirements, would make the exterior of the addition 10 feet, creating almost maybe nine feet and a few inches of interior space, and what I would, what I would be creating are more small rooms that I already have in the house. The bedroom, I mean, my bedrooms now are, one is 10 by 16, one's 11 by 12, but the other one is eight by 12. So I looked to do it smaller to comply, spend less money, obviously, but the sizes weren't gonna work. The table is massive, that I mentioned to you, it's four feet wide and nine feet long with benches, so I needed depth and breadth, so to speak, in the, in the areas. So it was, it was either comply, which wasn't gonna work size-wise, or not comply, which is where I, where I am now.
Fellow board members, this is Joey, and in the absence of the good architect on our, on our board membership, we're stuck with me. I would, even before this conversation came up, I wanted to point out in our discussion, especially with related to being self-created, he's trying to design a 16-foot wide addition. On a professional level, I can tell you that's about as narrow as he can make it, there's, there's really no, there, there are technical problems and residential code problems, building code problems, that come up if he was trying to make it any narrower than that. And I, I want to reinforce what he's saying and also point out that that might be a reason to look at this with respect to the self-created stand, part of standard.
Thank you, and additionally to that, I was trying to keep it 16 feet, being a construction modular, eight foot. I couldn't, sorry, made it 15 feet, but as Mr. Gentile pointed out, the, the smaller the size, the more issues one creates for oneself, and yes, this is a self-created situation. The addition is.
Thank you for conceding that.
It is what it is, as they say.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Now, we're talking about the side that you're adding addition, can you, on the other side, how far is your house to the side? Because it was built in 1930.
Yeah.
And it was non-conforming, so how far is that side?
Eight feet.
Eight feet. So if, if that room existed back in those days, you wouldn't have a problem with the, because eight feet from the side on the other side, right?
Eight feet on the left side.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's.
And now you're gonna have.
Nine feet on.
Nine feet on the right side. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? Having heard none, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard for or against the application? Having heard none, is anybody, would anybody on the board like to make a motion for or against this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Green?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the application. The ability to achieve the benefit appears to be presented to us in a reasonable and feasible means, and would not, in my estimation, be unfeasible. I suppose it could be moved a little here or a little there, toward the street or back or such, but that doesn't really mesh with what is hoped to be an attractive addition to the home. And as far as the thought of this being an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I would, I would say this, in fact, would be a desirable change. We're taking a house that in 1930 was probably top-end, but over time, it, it's, it's a modest home, and there's nothing wrong with modest homes, but when there is this application before this board to make a change, that would be desirable and certainly not change the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the nearby properties. It, it, in my mind, weighs to the granting of the motion. Is the request substantial? Absolutely, there's no question about it, this is an addition, honestly, I don't think I need to say more about that. Were there, will this request have an adverse physical or environmental effects? From the questions posed, and more importantly, the, the answers provided, I think that there will not be any substantial adverse physical or environmental effects. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, that's been conceded by the applicant because it is what it is, I think you may have even said that, I agree with you, it's, it's not, it's relevant but not determinative in any event, therefore, the reasons that I've proposed, I would move in favor of granting the application.
A motion has been made, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for all the reasons stated, and I want to tell the applicant, you presented a very well-laid-out case for your home, and we thank you.
A motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the motion? Having heard none, Ms. Ketti, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Trimarki?
Yes.
Mr. Gentile?
Yes, for the reasons stated, this is, I'm a, I'm a resident of Old Town, and, and this is just part of Old Town, and it sounds like it will be a benefit to the homeowner and the community.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hoke?
I, I would just like to say yes for the reasons stated, I'd also like to say that I, I think it's, in terms of the change in the, we frequently talk about an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I think to have responsible homeowners, homeowners aging with their properties in a responsible way, that that should be encouraged, so I think that, that this doesn't create an undesirable change in the neighborhood, it creates a desirable change in the neighborhood, and that's another consideration that I, I put in this, we frequently talk about aging in place, this is another form of aging in place, growing a family and, and with grandkids and so forth, so for those reasons, your, I vote yes, and your variance has been approved, seven to zero vote, I would say that the only thing that still is on my mind, I would have liked to have seen pictures of this table, I am, I am envisioning something like out of Hogwarts, so I hope you.
Maybe a slight exaggeration, but it is big.
I hope you, I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you all very much.
Take it.
Yep.
If there's nothing, no further discussion this evening, I have motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?